Okay, good afternoon. This is the amenities committee meeting on Wednesday the 7th of September at two o'clock. Welcome to you all, thank you very much for coming. I'm not feeling a hundred percent today everybody, but Dave's not here, so I thought I'd better come. But hopefully we'll get through the agenda and you'll be extra nice to me today. I'm looking at you Dennis. But no, I'm not feeling a hundred percent, but we shall move on. This item on the agenda is 282, any declarations of any disposable pecuniary interests? None, if any crop up, shout as we go through. Item 283, do you have any apologies for absence? Everybody else is here with those three, so that's good, thank you. Third item is the minutes, these are from the amenities meeting held on the 6th of July. They were received by council on the 26th of July. Is the committee happy that I sign them as a true and accurate report please? Agreed, thank you very much. Item 284, financial report update, to receive and discuss the amenities financial report. This was in the pack circulated before the meeting. Alan, is there anything to add to the report that was circulated?
There isn't. We've made a significant effort at getting the costs in. Where costs haven't come in, they've been accrued. So this is a very fair reflection of where we are. There is, again, I think this has become a bit past, it passes the minus when you look at bearings. But it's also a little bit misleading. On the playpots, if the committee members recall, we set aside money for playpots to come out of reserves for the emergency maintenance. Some of that maintenance has come forward to this year. And that's featuring there. The other kind of big anomaly is toilet expenditure. We spent extra money getting the wall gate or the company that supply those integrated units. We had backlog in terms of servicing that, so we caught that up, some upfront costs of doing that. Hopefully that will finish. And then on the other side, our open space management costs at the moment are significantly under budgeted. So there are, like I said, there's swings and roundabouts. Overall, we're probably not doing too bad. We're £4,000 over expenditure, bearing in mind the playpots have to be funded from reserves, or part of playpots has to be funded from reserves. And the income side's a little bit up, but I think that's just more a timing issue. Typically those crops will come through towards the end of the year, the calendar year. But otherwise, you know, nothing to, it'll always be better, but nothing to be scared of.
It'll always be better. Does anyone have any questions or comments on the finance report? No, can I just ask, on the row there about property maintenance. I've always been a little bit unclear about which particular properties amenities is responsible for, because I noticed St Peter's Park repair is the major reason for the overspend. But we don't tend to really talk about property at amenities anymore. We certainly don't really talk about St Peter's Church. And I'm just wondering if, you know, perhaps in time that that one needs to be reallocated to a different committee? Or maybe we should give it more attention, do you know what I mean? We don't ever talk about property at amenities. RBL has been, British Age has been spoken about, finance and other venues, spoken about venues and markets. So is that any specific properties that relate to us or just general?
The rule that I've adopted, and I'm not saying that that's official, it's just that we have property repair, maintenance budgets everywhere. The properties that are rented out are funded through personnel, we've added a line out today. The buildings that relate specifically to the Carnegie and Guildhall complex are funded through VNC. And the other buildings are funded through amenities. So that's, St Peter's, for example, doesn't fit into any other committee. So that budget has been retained in amenities. So that's the kind of rule that I'm using, whether I'm reflecting the exact sort of something you're sure.
Okay, no, that's fine. I think it's something we need to be aware of as a committee, because St Peter's has got the potential to be a significant overspend. It requires an awful lot of work, certainly more than the budget of £10,000 that we've spent. But I just wanted to make that point, so. Okay, there's no further comments, we'll move on from finance, we'll note to the financial report. Thank you very much, Alan. Moving on to 286, committee officers' report to receive and discuss. Welcome Nick, thank you very much, circulating your report, if you'd like to go through it.
Okay, so this round, so they're taking into account town team and countryside. So the town team are currently being busy from tasking restricted numbers. However, I'm now pleased to report that we now have two full-time new members of staff, and both of David and Thomas have recently joined the town team. The month of August has been a busy one for us, which included including preparations, professional street furniture auditing, as well as local contractors and graziers and volunteers to help areas maintain. The team have continued to carry out maintenance tasks and plan further for scheduled defended maintenance to the council-owned assets. This will include building maintenance, street furniture maintenance and open space groundwork. Some of the jobs the team have recently completed are refurbishment of the town council-owned street furniture. This has included two carts and benches being painted close to the common space statue, and pink square wooden benches being treated and refurbished. We continue to battle at the moment with a large amount of graffiti issues which have occurred to our assets and builders over the last month. All reports have been forwarded to the police and police to investigate. Unfortunately, due to insufficient evidence, these cars have been dropped at prison. Below some of the issues and jobs the team have carried out, so obviously graffiti issues have even started hitting the public toilets now on the walls. litter bins, benches, our guildhall was hit with graffiti. So it's a mixture of different areas that we're sort of being targeted with, but we continue to battle along with them. So the street furniture going along is still very hard to determine ownerships. And the team have continued to contact both Breton District Council, Norfolk County Council, garden street furniture ownerships. There's still a way for further confirmation of any licensed brims which may have been drawn up previously. Over the years, the items are okayed around the town, as well as highlighting any issues that our families all need rectifying. We hope once ownerships have been clarified for, this will allow us to do more of an overview of who owns what items, and where things seem to be budgetable going forward for all parties and placement of schedules of the street furniture. Playpots, the team continue to carry out weekly checks for the town's playpots. And we have now started to carry out more repairs in elsewhere possible. These will include removing shackles to swing seats, as well as repairing and tightening loose bits of pictures, replacing minor parts of painting items. We can now scale to further enhance maintenance, but it's going forward with the increased staff on the scene. A tender was released for mixed ways of maintenance repairs needed for work, so this is now closed. Tenders have been marked and budgeted and programmed for work is now needed for the next stage to bring the various players that are just going to be maintained ongoing. There's a few factors, the in-house repairs that the team have been carrying out recently. Moving on to grazing, with further issues with several dog attacks to livestock on Barnham Common. Unfortunately, the grazer has been picking up some high costs with vet bills and the loss of livestock, as well as personal stress as a result of this. We're awaiting a written correspondence from them if they are going to continue to graze the areas. As they have raised concerns of grazing should further within the open space and start to remove livestock from the common areas. The attacks again were all reported in Norfolk Police, but the grazer unfortunately has said they will not be taking any further action as they say they have a lack of investigation evidence. Castle Park and Ramparts, the grazer mentioned a lot of vegetation, pay beyond grazing. It's currently delivered with gravel, self-seeded trees within the area. Unfortunately, this potentially leaves us to further discuss and prepare for our next meeting as an agenda item, mechanical cutting for Castle Park, due to the nature of it not being grazed as far as present. Quads are currently being retained at present for this work and will help us understand the initial costings to be expected for this work to take place. Barnham Common water supply. So we've been pursuing the water supply that was sort of agreed previously at meetings. The water connection costs have now come in for the permanent water supply to both sides of Barnham Common, as well as approval for this to happen from angling water. The costs are higher now than originally budgeted for when this was agreed. And again, considerations need to be taken in for next meeting as how we proceed with this. This funds on this island, it's not the county board. This will allow us to graze those places at Barnham Common with permanent main source of life for livestock in the future. Grazing is continuing. And this will also give us a main source of life for the area. This year has certainly been a task for the town team providing water for all the hot weather recently this summer for the animals. Will potentially become a viable asset to the area once completed. Ford Meadow. So Ford Meadow unfortunately, due to the lack of rainfall and water available to the site, there's causes of issues with getting more tough moods grazed, as well as the grazing issues. We now again need to possibly mechanically cut and collect the vegetation from the site. This will allow us to continue to manage Ford Meadow to the amount of the wildflowers thriving and flourish. Again, the park is apparently being retained and it's hoped that it can be carried out in due course. Mill Lane Seating. So permits for signage to be installed and authorization of the soil and ground seed to be avoided to areas now will be cleared. Granted by the Environment Agency with further clarification. Town council approved contract will carry out soil seating towards the end of September. The town team will also be replacing the permits signage in place which is agreed to track parking within the area being refurbished. There's a sort of an outlaying sign that will be used on the area to try and just certainly mark it on there as they have done in the past. Public Toilets. A review has just been carried out with the contractor and emails and correspondence have now once again been sent following the weekend issues of open enclosures. This has been sent in the context that the contractor understands are serious issues with their staff not fulfilling their roles and the implications involved when these incidents happen once again. Current level of service on open enclosures is totally unacceptable and these are to be looked at and rectified immediately as an equal tax of services provided to the public. Contractor is currently reviewing staff shifts and understands council's need to have this in place and up to a hundred percent acceptable level. The solutions and options are also now being explored as to how we move forward with this operational services to public toilets and the open enclosure sites at weekends. Moving on lastly, conservation volunteers. So the conservation volunteers we recently met with, the officers on the BFDR project. We discussed a few concerns with the conservation group, they're getting a lack of numbers joining up and their numbers have dwindled. So we just, we put together a management programme, works needed for the area. And we're going to have two meets per week going forward as planned. We have also redesigned and republished the conservation volunteers leave letter information. The communication has been released on social media to try and recruit new members to join up. The group will now also be further supported going forward with our team member, town team member David. He has also been working hard to reduce monthly schedules himself. And this will give a variety of tasks to volunteers to be interested in as well as to operate our open space and further break work they all do. Volunteers have been working hard over the last month and carrying out a range of tasks, including surveying the various species of butterflies found on our barn and common site, as well as starting the process of tidying up a few of the newer planted trees and hedging, along checking tree guards and roofing any that haven't survived within the stream team we've had this summer. The loads of tables, asking how it's worked by the volunteers, and numbers of 10 each month on the meet. And this has taken 32 hours throughout the month of August, there's a detail of who's attended and what they've done today.
Thank you, it's a big list. But a busy summer, thank you very much. Appreciate it all. Dennis.
Item 3. Go on, number five. The Ford Meadow cutting, is this?
I don't know, pardon for this question.
Is this how likely that we will be returning more mechanical cutting all the time at Ford Meadow? Or is it, like I say, a one-off? This is potentially a one-off and then potentially we can then look at grazing to go forward, how we go forward. Whether we use, you know, the existing grazers, put in tenner as well as others. But yeah, it just gets out of this model this year because obviously we just cannot get the water buffer on the side. So we need to cut and maintain and move all vegetation to allow wildflowers to flourish.
Creating more water will be ruined.
The next question was about the water, the shrapnel license, the meadow, I mean, of the farm. That's, we haven't got figures for expenses here, but it's going to be more than we thought it would be today, which is quite unlikely case. And we have problems with grazing and everything, but not because we're having dog attacking animals and the grazer is not sure about whether he wants to put his animals on within that kind of position anymore. Would we wait till we get grazing in place before we take the expense of getting water? We do need water from outside.
So fortunately, fortunately in a way, we are coming to the time here where we will remove all livestock. Yeah, obviously, you know, it's a bit of the area to recruit, right? And obviously the new seeds come for the spring. Yeah, so we are coming to a good time where we can obviously look at that going forward. So it gives us time to budget and obviously try and work out where we don't, you know, find expenditure that's happening. Once that happens, it will definitely be a good asset going forward. You know, at the moment, my team are going down twice a week and filling the holes found on the side in the summer. So they start with the cost of water and everything. Yeah, plus the vehicle and fuel and everything is just mounting up. So the best way forward to graze obviously is to have the water supply on site. But yes, it's a time.
And the other thing was the, I'm glad to see that we're progressing with the seeding of our area along there and the signs finally have to come out. Another question, I think. I've lost it, so I've not been recording, so thank you very much.
Thank you for that. And Mike.
Thank you. I think we just, I would like to say a big thank you, Nick. I think what we're doing now in terms of dealing with the outdoor spaces is far and away more than we've been quite recent times we used to do. It's down to more organisation and the presentation of the information is very often, thanks very much for that. I've got one, I think, mine's like, like Dennis, I guess between us we'll get some eventually, it's quite a lot could be discussed. And just a general comment, share about the issue twice raised of the situation with the police. So on two different issues, the police are saying cases have been dropped because of insufficient evidence. So what they, I think, what they're saying is if we could have taken it to some in the court, we'd have proceeded. But we're not prepared to do anything else like to, for example, setting up our controls so that there's a less chance of it happening again. So we're getting a situation where grazing is a danger of being lost because no one checks, no one stops. Irresponsible dog owners, I mean, no doubt there are many hundreds of responsible dog owners, but there is never enough. Irresponsible ones don't care, or maybe enjoy letting the dog attack anyone. We're finding it really difficult to deal with that. I'm very disappointed that the police are saying on that, another issue, they haven't got the evidence. So this is only way we could alert the police to our concerns, perhaps by maybe just inviting our police officers, the tenants committee ones, to talk about their problem, their side of it, so we can see why they are, I would actually say, in meticombers, doing nothing. That's very disappointing, that's the first one. And the second one is to do with, again, the Mill Lane Seating. I think we have a bit of a problem with this here, and I can't see it happening again. I think there are two separate issues. One is that sometimes in high summer, we've had a lot of high summer, the car park is actually full, particularly now that we are getting a number of camper vans, which frequently take up two spaces each. Some of them are very large now, and therefore people are looking for a site to park elsewhere. And the other thing is, people actually are parking along the river so that they can sit and picnic within a yard of the car park. There are some people who find it quite difficult to leave the safety of their car. So they sit more or less with the door open and the car leaning against it. I'm not sure how we get around that, but we do need to make sure that there's sufficient parking. And we did have, I thought, a plan to put a hedge up on there and possibly to create an area where there was a bit of extra park, four or five spaces nearer than up towards the, what's the name of the house, the big house? Which maybe would have discouraged people from parking where the damage has been done through tar tracks. Is there any progress with that? Because I think that would be the solution to the long-term solution, to having to keep reseeding that, if we could prevent the problem happening in the first place. So can I ask, we look again at getting that area hedged off. And some of it has rattled or something, even armed service, there's an obvious place where cars can get it. I thought it's good for more spaces, but enough judging by the numbers I've seen of the numbers today.
Okay, if we deal with them in turn, Mike, so I quite like the suggestion of inviting somebody along from the police. That's something the committee are happy with. I think you're right, there are a number of issues that aren't being given sufficient focus. I mean, I dread to think how much money we've spent on graffiti removal and street furniture repairs, which we're talking thousands about, yeah. So if we can actually win to invite somebody from the police to attend our October meeting? And the second point, I think is probably more relevant for our later agenda item where we set priorities for the year ahead. On our, just to give you a chance to mull it over in your head, on our priorities at the moment, we have some money set aside for the middle car park on Barnham Common, as it's called, and researches that. If you were to, I was thinking about this yesterday actually, if you were to ask me if I would rather see a formalised car park along Mill Lane or one at Barnham Common, I'd rather see one at Mill Lane frankly. But we can have a discussion about that later in the agenda. I thought that might prompt Chris to put his hand up.
Yes, Chris.
It will come, no great surprise that I don't agree with banning parking along the river. I would prefer that this sign would have said, to protect the green spaces while it's being reseeded, rather than just no parking. There's no reason why we're not, well, we haven't given a reason why we're asking people not to park. We might get more cooperation from people if we get told a why we'd rather didn't park there. And I would also like to propose that when that's the area is seeded, these signs come out. So that people can carry on enjoying the assets of the river.
They are kind of designed to be permanent, so we've obviously included on their welcome to the main riverside, this area is open for 50%. Please help us to protect our green spaces by parking in the car park and on the bridges.
I understand that.
So it might be trying to divert me, because you tend to go past there, I know my team several times have gone past there. And people have literally just parked on the riverbank where there's plenty of space at the car park. Well, I think it's a little bit like seriously, people sometimes just literally park where they want to picnic, rather than just park where there's a proper car park and then walk to the area where they're going to try and sit and eat. It is a bit of a difficult one. But I think you either have to kind of try and put an enforcement, although we can't enforce it, we have to try and put an enforcement there to try and certainly do it. Otherwise, we're just going to leave it open to everybody, just keep parking. So when we seed soil, it's going to last, I'm moving, probably a few months, we're going to be back to square one.
Right, it's about the company.
Yeah.
Yeah. I can understand what you're saying, but I always find people are more amiable if they know why.
Yeah.
You know, and no matter what anyone says, I will never ever agree to banning parking along the river because I think it's an asset that that has always had been for young families who don't have to cross the road, which is a busy road.
Yeah.
You know, disabled people, why should they have to cross it, et cetera, et cetera. You know, but I would rather see that sign says whilst reseeding, to let people know.
We can, we can come back to that, Chris, if you want to make a formal proposal. But at this point, just to be clear on language, we're not banning car parking along the river. We're encouraging people not to park along there, which I think is the right approach. It is much more desirable for people to use the allocated car park. And it is partly for safety reasons, partly for environmental reasons. But we've gone down the encouragement route and I think the language probably is encouraging enough to park elsewhere. Please use the designated car park, not banning it. But I do like the idea, as you suggested, about some additional information as to why these signs are going up at the time and why we're reseeding it.
So yeah, one of the things we're going to obviously do is do a press release. So we'll do a media release and everything to inform the public what we're doing, like you say, the reasons behind it. So it will just be, obviously it won't just be the signs going in, there will be bits behind it, the media, the public, you know, being involved.
Okay.
And I understand, yeah.
I've got a couple of handsmen up, so I'll take Carl first, please, and then Susie.
Comment for banning grazing, does Susan want to go first?
Was this on the seeding and signage issue, Susie?
No, it was about the graffiti.
Okay.
In that case, well, I should say, I wanted a concern regarding the grazing with the dog issue. If the person not in the environment, I mean, same problem, that was a separate report first of all. But I'm thinking, if grazing is going to be the fallback, it's going to be the main core of how we're going to sustain and maintain those green spaces as we're able to be environmentally friendly, et cetera, et cetera. And we want to leave high tenders for grazing, for grazing for further parts besides Barnham Common and other parts. This is very complicated because you're going to work as a deterrent from them wanting actually to live for the time, actually wanting to take on those spaces to graze those spaces as a yard. Should we not try and find a solution first, whether it's with the police or something else, who really tried to tackle this issue first? That's causing problems with current grazing with dog attacks and everything, which has been an extra cost before we tried to go for tender for further spaces. What's going to happen is if they continue to incur those costs on that and everything, and then sort of deter, you know, pull off them taking on the space, the tender, they are actually going to charge more. So the tendering cost will go up for us as well. So we have this with them not wanting to take on the spaces and actually costing up for the council.
Yeah, no, I appreciate what you're saying, the tendering process is quite lengthy. So I would rather start it off now so that we can see what interest there is whilst we also talk to the police and deal with that side of it. I mean, this is tender, even if we agree to it today, second agenda item, but it won't be until next year's grazing season. So we can, you know, we can run both figures at the same time really as well, I'm saying, but I think it's.
Yeah, the concern is that they will likely, you know, cost themselves higher because they are predicted. They will have extra costs with that and whatnot to go along with that. So it's detrimental for both us initially and for the grazers for the people running it. So we should really try and find a solution, whether it's working with the police or trying to find an alternative to control the area better.
Yeah, I agree. Susie.
Yes, thank you. One of the points I wanted to raise was about the graffiti, you're saying it's costing us a lot of money to clean up. Is there any way we can find out who's doing it? Is it just one person or a group of people?
So the session is obviously from the evidence suite, it's a group of people going around and they're tagging.
I was going to say, because you can sometimes, some of the tags, not that I expect.
So they have been tagging and it tends to be concurrent in the areas that we are finding the graffiti. There was a spate of another type of graffiti and it had been determined that there was two groups going around. Some evidence was submitted to the police and again, because it just came back as insufficient evidence, we sort of couldn't understand why they took that decision, but they obviously did. And I think the same thing was with the grazer, again, going back to that one. There was some evidence there and again, they looked at the evidence and insufficient evidence. And it kind of frustrated the grazer, they'd kind of tried to do some evidence that they had of the problem and they didn't go taking any further. But the trouble is, we've been trying to say to the police, obviously with the graffiti, frustrating issue is we've got historic buildings, we've got listed buildings, you know, we've got historic sites like the ivory in place all around the town. They're also being affected, although they're not under the ownership of us. You know, there is a duty to protect our heritage and our history of the town. And so we are putting pressure on them every time we speak to them. You know, we try and say, look, you know, this is historical incidents that happened, you know, with like the things on our buildings, our listed buildings. So, you know, we keep putting the reports through, we keep loving them, loving them with the reports and we get the crime numbers. So we're hoping by keep pushing them and pushing them, they'll just get that one and kind of take a bit more with them. But we'll try our best, we'll try our best, but it'd be good, like I say, I'll give a suggestion to bring a police officer into the meeting. At least we can find a VA's, you know, face to face and kind of put our issues forward to them to take back to their statuary.
Okay, I've got Stuart and also.
One more point about the butterflies, I believe that this has been really good news for butterflies. I was wondering if that's been picked up in the.
So we're pretty much, we're coming to the end, so they've probably got about another three weeks to survive to do one on Barnham Common. And then hopefully the information will be compiled together, we should get a report then of butterflies and species that have been found. So we have something to publish out and move it out to public.
Could you refer that into your report for October, something that'd be really interesting. Yeah, always keen to be educated, that sort of thing. I'll take Stuart next and then Dennis.
Sorry, that was a big tea, Nick, but I'm sorry. Have we got CCTV of the guildhall and going into the toilets and doing it?
We have got the ones at Guild Hall and it was passed on to Norfolk Police. It was pushed on to them and that's where it was taken, so they've still got the evidence.
So I was thinking, you know, that just gives us even more harmony to have, please, yeah. Obviously staying aware of this issue that they raised themselves. And, you know, the state has been promoted by us government with quite some, it's also, I think, a matter for the greater part, because you want to do another town, I think, and some they've got the graffiti there, they're probably very encouraged, because they've come to visit and invest in it. So I think we need to raise that as well. On the, um, water side, are we looking across for bore holes on the site, or is this running pipes too?
So it will be run off the mains, so there is mains that are by each side of the road, and we're technically connecting it to the mains, um, that's sort of like, well, there's certainly restrictions nowadays, um, you know, behind grazing and, you know, water for them, um, fresh supply of water has to be given to them, there's certainly restrictions on the combined side of backflow valves and all sorts of different things. Um, so that's again where the cost has come in, as well as road closures for the work to happen.
I didn't know anything else.
We, no, football club has got their own.
Okay, right.
And they, yeah, pretty club, and that traction, it's, it's, and they'll have some indicative costs there, which might be, and also, well, they're the old Britain sports with the, on common on the sports side.
Yeah.
Whether there's any water pipes that far, because you could run it out in pilot through the flat, you know, footages area.
Of course.
But, you know, they're.
I've been looking at the, the sort of complication behind them, what's involved, and that's on the.
Yeah, but the whole thing wants to have cost cost.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
Then you can dictate where you want to have places.
Yeah, it's other option.
Failing that, we move from sheep to camel.
No, but just kind of, just quickly going back before we move on, obviously with the graffiti, you know, the most frustrating as well was that some of the areas, like King Square, and King Street, um, and potentially at the end, there's CCTV monitoring that area. Though, you know, Britain don't monitor themselves, they have to monitor on behalf of them. Um, so there was opportunities there to catch the individuals that were doing this, you know, it's just so frustrating, but we'll continue to battle.
Okay. Well, we've got a couple of suggestions there, yeah, how we can escalate it to support you and the team. Thanks, Stuart. Uh, Dennis, please.
Um, well, I remembered what I wanted. On the contract for the toilets, nothing, is part of the contract also the closing of sites, the sites, it's only the cemetery. Right. Now, I, I don't know about the rest of the people, but here I'm having complaints about the cemetery closing time.
Yeah.
And I do think we need to do, that's one of our contracts, we need to do something about the cemetery closing time, and, um, so I think we need to bring that forward.
So the town team, primary lot sites, Monday to Friday, February, yes, we open sites on Friday, but because the team leap off when they do, it then takes into account that we have to have sites, uh, closed on a Friday, and then open close Saturday and Sundays. Um, but during the week, the town team do the opening, closing.
Yeah, but my complaint is, is we're working to winter hours still, and it's been, it's about a part of the week for it to get.
Yeah.
Um, you know, uh, and we advertise that our times are, this is the dust and dust, and, and on, you know, we used to, having done it myself for a whole week once, or two weeks. Um, it, it was quite an interesting thing, but we are having people who are having trouble visiting their sites, because we are closing at the regular hours now.
All right, so we're potentially, um, we are exploring further different options, um, closures of sites and bits, um, but obviously we are aware, and obviously we have on the contract, so we want to.
Yeah, and I'm happy for that contract. Um, and the other thing is, the ruling is that you can have dogs on Barnham Cross Common, but they must be on a, needed all the time. And of course, it's now enforcement that's the problem all the time, it's enforcement. It is great having these rules, but if we don't enforce them, or can't enforce them, then what's these, you know, chaos.
That's my. Well, you're, you're about 24 hours early on the discussion about the cemetery agenda, this is on the agenda for tomorrow.
Yeah, it's part of the track.
Well, I, I think it needs to be made much clearer to councillors what the contract is for, um, the different elements. So you've got cemetery covers that bit, amenities covers this bit, it's, it was mud, frankly, to me.
This one, for some reason, and I can understand where you're coming from, but this one, for some reason, this one contract covers the whole thing, and so it really delays this committee at this time till we change it.
They're not.
Didn't change it.
They're, they're not singular in their sound, they're to be performing poorly across all committees.
Across the whole, and very much, yeah.
So I would not give you a hard time.
We're not being, getting on your tree. So, um, but, um, on the point about toilets specifically, so I'm very aware about the, um, concerns about the cemetery, there's a couple of different issues, one, one they're not performing to the bit that they're supposed to be doing, but also there's an argument to have later closure, two separate issues. But specifically on toilets, have we had complaints about late opening or presumably late closing of toilets?
Some of them, yeah, we, we do tend to get approved to the office, um, and I think personally as well, at weekends, I'll get heads up when sites are not open, um, so I do try my best to keep going and opening sites, so they can reopen. Um, and I keep, you know, obviously, same with the contracts or any, any discussions, um, about how we go forward, but, uh.
Well, you, you mentioned we're going to get an options paper for that in October?
Yes, quickly, yes.
And I don't know how the committee feel, but I'm very uncomfortable about us contracting out a service and then our staff, you and others picking up the slack, frankly, it's not fair on, on you and others, so we do need to resolve that.
Absolutely. Because like, Mr Chairman, I think that the quality of cleanliness is quite a certain issue, where I try and looking, use the public first as often as possible. Um, I mean, it's my job being a councillor. So, uh, I'm very, very, really, I think there's a problem.
Basically, that's, you know, it's being done, it's the time of the closing.
I agree.
It's, it is, it's been quite a spread, I'm really annoyed.
Yes, I agree with that comment. Um, okay, uh, that's the end of my list. Are there any other comments on Nick's town team report, please?
In regard to the fact that the contract is important to the board, perhaps, you know, it's, it's things I've always understood, they continue to respond to, I think, something different, rather than everyone contracted to all of the sites, perhaps go to, for smaller ones, like one for cemeteries, another one for toilets. And yes, if there is problem, of course, if you have one contract that prices for the whole thing, and say, and say that, in that respect, but if it's more important, on the long term, we will intend on spending more money anyways, because our staff is putting that time to, to, you know, overlook those, those issues. So perhaps giving the opportunity to other contractors to come along in little patches for a while, if that's driving companies, not only for price, but for quality of service, on the long term, we're able to sort of separate which ones are the best, and perhaps some of the contracts for other parts, it's a bigger patch, for the ones that are better, just a suggestion.
Thank you.
You've also read that you have been tracking across the repair of street furniture, are you tracking out the hours spent on the graffiti as well?
I'm part of keeping a spreadsheet of, that's what I'm spending my time.
Just showing that, but feedback is a start. You know? You know, that can happen in progress.
Okay, um, just one from Meena on your report, um, do we have any benches left in stock?
So we've got a couple that we've put together at the moment, um, the, so the building's new ones with, um, old ends that we had, um, and we will refurbish in house, hopefully, um, to keep the cost down, so we will have two benches potentially in stock.
Okay, the reason I ask that is because, um, on Monday this week was the official start date of the new pathway along the river. Um, I don't know if anyone's been down there, I've been to see if, along Bladen Bridge I'm, I'm talking about, um, I don't know if they have actually started or not.
So they've set the work site up, and I think they are now, he's talking about brown roads.
Okay. And, and I, I wonder if we could put a couple of benches along that stretch facing the river.
Yeah, potentially, should we have a spread on the end?
Okay.
So we have to go to Brenton, so I could, uh, um, request in Brenton.
Yeah, would the committee generally support you having a couple of benches along there?
Yes.
Make it a nice, it's a lovely area.
Yes, but it's also an area used by people who intend to shop from, I mean, and, and carry heavy shopping back, want to sleep, visit on halfway, I think, with, with, with everything.
Thank you all, uh, thank you for your report then, Nick, and move on. So, uh, item two eight seven is the play park repairs tender. Dave's not here, but thank you today for coming in and doing the, uh, scoring on the, uh, tenders. Does this one do, Alan?
No, no.
No, no, no.
I think.
I was. Oh, sorry, Dennis, I was, I was only aware that Dave did, so, uh, thanks to you too.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. This committee would just need to back a recommendation to council.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, um, Nick, did you really give us a bit of an overview of the tender, because I know you've, uh, been through it.
Yeah, so the, the name repairs, obviously, the, the big repairs are servicing, that's where the, the money seems to be sort of highly, um, costing. So a lot of the, the areas with, on the goal, the play parks, we've obviously taken over, um, a few years back in the district, and the surface, obviously, degrading this rubber, it degraded parts, um, and is in need, seriously, of redoing certain areas of play parks. So it's kind of broken down into the, the different areas. So we've got the actual schedule of where the work is required, um, the tenant's obviously released, um, companies coming to tend it, and obviously, now, at a point where we need to discuss further, how we go forward, um, and how we sort of take the play park repairs, um, do we prioritize certain areas, do we kind of do a mix, so we get servicing done and the, and the more major repairs done, and then potentially the, the lower, so we kind of categorize it to high median low, um, but a lot of them are median highs, yeah.
Okay, Dennis?
Yeah, um, I, I personally was fairly pegged in the back by the amount of money that it needed to, to do this. I mean, I know when we took it over in Britain, it was because of Britain wouldn't invest it, you can get out very far, and, uh, and so we had to do it all, give up the pay, basically. It is a considerable amount of money for either one of these contenders that came through, and I don't see any way we can do this, but other than by putting priorities on some of these things, on, on basic health and safety, I think, and doing it, because, um, it would use up your budget for a couple of years, you'd be, yeah, for it.
Yeah, fill the hole off in one, so.
No. Um, I had a brief chat with the, the town clerk when I, um, went in to do the scoring for this, um, we don't necessarily have, uh, all of the money available to, to do all the work. Um, and on one hand, it's, uh, quite helpful that not all of the repairs are urgent.
Yeah.
But, you know, some of them, uh, really need doing, frankly, but, you know, our play areas are very well used, and some of them are in what might not be an unsafe condition, but they're certainly not great, and we'd like to see them improved. And so I think what we probably need to do today is to, um, uh, agree a recommended supplier, and there's a recommendation from the, uh, tendering process is there. Um, we've got, uh, a, a play area reserve fund, um, and I would suggest that we allocate a chunk of money to do almost sort of like phase one over the next year, um, and get, uh, a, a chunk of the work done, and then reevaluate essentially. Um, I'm looking at this sheet here, Alan, it says projects from reserves, and there's a play park renewal fund of forty thousand pounds. So would we be able to recommend, yeah, I did notice that, but I'd have to, um.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, if we did forty thousand in this financial year, um, I mean, next financial year's not too far away, frankly, um, so if we allocated forty K to do phase one, and then it could liaise with the contractors to do the most urgent of those repairs, because some of them are more pressing than others, aren't they?
Yeah.
Um, how does that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's mainly the servicing, you've talked to contractors, whether it's, you know, more costly to all the areas rather than, he is now, he's ensuring that it's safe there.
Yeah, give more time to hear that. Um, yeah, I think that makes perfect sense, so, um, you probably know in your own head, because I know you've been and visited all of these sites, which ones, you know, you would like to do first, take up on the port, which I think is very valid. So essentially, what we need to do is, um, recommend to the council, the supplier, and allocate forty K to do it.
This is the approved budget for this year, so it could just be.
Spending money is too much. Who knew? Good. Um, because the other thing is, it takes so long to get some of these parts of the areas, it shouldn't be first of all, anyway. Makes it more manageable for the contractor, I think. Okay, I'm happy to propose that. Somebody like to second that? Dennis, members, agreement?
Agreed.
Thank you very much, that's a recommendation to full council, because it's over.
Are we running a big company?
Yes, there's two.
Company two.
Recommend, um, whichever one was agreed.
Yeah, company two.
Company two, um, forty thousand pounds.
It's your full count.
So they won't, they'll lose it out of the comp anyway. We chat about it. Is there anything else that we need to do under play park repairs tender? Um, what would be particularly helpful, Nick, just forward planning, um, once that phase one is, uh, completed, you can liaise with the contractor and come up with phase two, so as soon as they, so we can use the, the application as well, well, because it's never going to get cheaper, it's always going to get more expensive, so. Um, okay, I'm going to move on to the next one. I'm actually going to park item two eight eight and two nine one and do them at the end of the, uh, meeting, Karen, just to measure around slightly there, but they're very similar discussions, which I like to take at the end, and I'm going to take two eight nine next then, which is the grazing tender, which we had a little bit of a conversation about today. Um, uh, that, the text of that was circulated. Are there any questions or comments on the grazing tender? When does the tender run from, till when are we expecting these people to start, and when is it for?
The current's when expires at the end of the year, at the end of the calendar year.
Yeah. Is it a one year?
It's a three year, I remember.
I'm struggling to open it on my machine, but it actually says that on that document.
Yes, yeah.
There we are. And I, I read through it several times, and it, it needs to be tidied up, frankly, because there's, um, some sort of grammatical errors in it and, um, repeats. Um, so it says, council's looking for a grazer who can supply animals to graze Barnham Cross Common, Ford Meadow and Castle Park. Uh, the town council manages open access and is well used, where it's, it's effective, and the areas are being grazed for conservation purposes to restore the habitat that is important to the rare plants and insects. This means that we can only provide limited grazing at specific times of year. The successful grazer will be expected to move large numbers of animals on and off site on a regular basis. If I were a grazer, I'd be slightly nervous about that, because you kind of need to define regular means. Is it a week? Is it a day? Um, and then it says, the town council will be providing an annual burst rate of three thousand to the successful grazer to support the grazer, to support the grazer machine, and educate the public. Last sentence, just in tidying up a little bit. So we are looking for somebody with a proven track record of managing a variety of grazing animals, provide evidence of appropriate insurance, provide evidence of understanding of compliance with the health and safety and animal husbandry legislative framework, the willingness to work with the town council to inform the public, deal with the challenges of the site, a local connection to the town, struggle and if possible, and experience of grazing Britain habitat in accordance with HLS agreement. What's HLS?
What?
Funny, that was just test. But we might have put that. Provide three years' commitment to grazing, like, so it is in there, three years, might want to just be very clear on the start and end date. Be able to provide a lot of animals for short periods of time, and be prepared to move them off site when required. Have access to a variety of rare breeds, particularly low rare sheep. And given that grazing is quite niche, shall we say, there's quite a lot of bullet points, I mean, aren't we being too prescriptive on who we want? I mean, do we think that there are people that, you know, take care of? I can very see us not giving the challenges of, yeah, us not getting anybody. I'm slightly worried about that.
It will be difficult for people to meet anyone at this point, I mean, rare breeds not hereditary, have them, um, I mean, it's all their animals, it's a lot, it's, you know, it's, it's been some size of a piece of string, I think. I think if we take off this, tell me if it allows the conversation we can throughout the contract. Or we are restrictive on some of the points and tell them, look, minimum of ten animals, so minimum of hundred animals. Where am I moving, but gives them a high line to see whether or not they can compete for the tender. It doesn't waste that time on our.
Yep.
Yeah, having had the privilege of doing the tendering on the first time we ever had a grazer. And we did have enough people then at the second time and then every done one since because of certain causes. But we, quite a few of those things, I think we do need to include in it. I mean, we need to be fair with the people doing it and telling them what, what, what we need and the reason we need it. The rare breed section of it is because our grazing isn't the luxurious grazing of, you know, that some have. It's rough grazing and only certain animals will utilise and eat that, that type of grazing, you know. So and there happens to be the rare breed are the ones that can survive on almost anything, so.
Okay.
I mean, I can't say buffalo, but the rare breeds, I mean, you touched on it, Dennis, about it, but, you know, surely that's the grazer's. As long as they graze as well, that's our priority.
That's not my point. Thank you. Stuart, did I say your hand?
No, no.
It was Mike's.
Sorry. I just come into what Ralph just said. To some extent, I think the idea of the rare breeds is to, is to be entertaining to the public. Particularly the water buffalo, which I very friendly, kind of, believe it or not. I wanted to comment on the bullet point seven, which is the penultimate one. If I was reading this, I'm trying to make myself a decision of being a rare, a rare breed or a flying, flying grazer. This is the one that is open negotiation between us and the grazer I would have thought. And it says be prepared to move them off site when required, that argument is often taken. Basically, if they move off site and the grazing is good enough for my animals. I would have thought that was a decisive moment when the grazer says, makes the decision in fact, we can. We can have animals there, there's always everything for them, enough food for them to eat. So I would think that we need to try and maybe be right when you're seeing more grazer friendly. And secondly, more briefly, I do the same with the existing rare grazer, so we need to be careful with dogs. And it would certainly put me off if I was a grazer. It's worth pointing out that the water buffalo area for me doesn't have that problem to the public. So they theoretically should be grazing in safety, you know, where, where sheep and water buffalo may safely graze. So four minutes of work, and at the very least, we should keep them up until grazing. It's also the one I would think where the public at most needs to get close to animals. Part because of the fence, part because it depends on the path that people use. So that's the idea of why it's a stay. So the children in particular have the opportunity of seeing rare breeds and youth animals and getting used to the fact that large animals, if you treat them respectfully, will treat you respectfully. And that's, that's an important thing for us all to learn. So let's encourage grazers as much as we can on the awkward bullet point seven.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay, on the need to move animals, fairly freely, one of the points is not just that they've eaten everything down along it. But we have a movement when it comes to time for certain plants to come up and everything. We need to clear the areas to allow our very rare Breton violets and other plants we had out there. Speed work of some sorts. But to, to stay and grow, otherwise if we allow animals to be on there at certain periods of the year, they will chomp down the plants and we won't get any seeds to regenerate. So if there is a multiple reason why we have to get animals.
Yep.
And that's it. So, yeah, I'll leave it at that.
I, I think the, the reason I'm digging at this a little bit is because I think we need a tender that gives us what we need. And then to fill the basics, I mean, ultimately, we're doing this to fulfill the responsibilities we have under natural and all the rest of it. If somebody then comes along and says, hey, I can do all of that, I've also got rare breeds and I'll also happen to do some talks for the public. They get brownies. I don't want people to be put off because we need a basic level of service. But if they can do all of that and then do this as well, you know, caution that five and then, you know, evaluate it. So I think we need to be clear that you get extra points almost because it's an expression of interest and such. You know, so when we come to score them, we give extra points for X, Y and Z. We can let people know that so they can tell us. So I just think it needs to be laid out a little bit different and tidied up a little bit. Other than that, does that give you enough?
Yeah.
Sort of mould it over a little bit collectively. So we'll add in dates and times and get it out. Any other comments on this one from folks? No? Good. So we would hope to get that revised now ASAP?
Hopefully.
Yep. I think it's important that we give people a long lead in time so they can forward plan. And just going back to Carla's point there, I, I think we need to be a bit more explicit about the fact that if somebody just wanted to graze Ford Meadow because that was suitable for water buffalo or just wanted to graze Castle Park, we should be able to accommodate that. We could have three grazer's that specialise in a particular area. Not many grazer's, I should think, have buffalo sheep, cows, everything else.
Just a point is, you know, if one of the, you know, moving the animals that are required, they should notice. And that's when you call, call extra cost for the grazer. But they're not anywhere likely willing to take on all those mountains and bid for them. The animals in there, it is for actually grazer to take on all the spaces, so you might be extra cost.
Cool. So we, we could get that redone and settled later, it's appreciated, thank you. Moving on to 290, to receive any update from the committee officers into the issue of the agenda.
This is Normie, this is the agenda, so he will be apologising for that. But there is just one, just one matter. We've been approached by a member of the public who would like to do some fundraising to upgrade one of the playparks in their specific area. And I just indicated that fortunately the agenda had closed, but we did have an upcoming meeting. And I'm not sure whether, how the committee would like me to go back to the member, get more information, be quite tolerant of the idea. Discourage, courage, just have a little bit of guidance on that.
Stuart?
Yeah, I think we need to have a, I think it's the maintenance estate, when we were looking to work with them to upgrade. Every slightly moving the past, we encouraged that, that groups to help fundraise and enhance that. I wouldn't want to show that track, I'd last season's work, but it may be this one of, you know, it's a bit swing. It may be they want the whole area and work with funds, there are different funds out there at times at times. And we're forcing future, but I think there's still probably, exactly usually the barrier is who owns the land. Who's working junction with them? And we say, who's affiliated with them, that's all. It may be worthwhile for us to get the things worked up ready.
Could we ask them to maybe submit a sort of proposal on, you know, what it is they want to do, what play area is? Maybe one that we're, it's about to do up, so, you know, who knows? But if they could put a bit more detail together, then we happily discuss it.
I don't wish to underestimate the importance of playparks. I mean, they are, in a sense, young, and to the children, especially if you live in a small town, hardly any garden to go to. I mean, no long days, you know? It's a good ride for you, you do this, take the playpark, you know, we've got, you know, children climbing the walls and too much screen time. I think, you know, for parents' mental health, they're essential.
Absolutely brilliant. So he receives more information about that in due course. Okay, moving on to 292, Fettford in Bloom, update. Firstly, a big thank you to all of the staff that helped to deliver the In Bloom competition this year. Very pleased with the number of nominations that we had, I think we had over 260, something like that. And we had the awards evening last Thursday and 11 of the 13 finalists were able to attend, which was really encouraging. And we gave the awards for first, second and third. A place finalist and the team kindly produced a buffet for the finalists as well. And we had the judges in attendance. And I've circulated some notes because I think it's important that we, having first delivered this after quite a long break, to review how it went so we can improve upon things for next year. And also to note what worked well so we can continue to do that. So do check in with your own suggestions, but I've trotted down my own thoughts. First of all, I think the nomination window was spot on May and June. And I, I think it took the whole of May for people to be talking about it. And I, I don't think many front gardeners particularly were really noteworthy in May, but come to fruition in June. And I think we had quite a lot of nominations in June as well. And I was very pleased about publicity and social media. And I don't think as a council, though, we submitted a single press release about it. Either the fact that we were launching a competition or the fact that people received an award. Although print media is, you know, we don't have a Fettford brand anymore. We do want to showcase Fettford, you know, to Norfolk and Suffolk and further afield. So I do think we need to get better as a council, sending out press releases. Not everyone's on Facebook, some people do read a newspaper still. I was actually contacted by the Greater Anglia Train Company because the Friends of Fettford Train Station won first prize for the Environmental Project of the Year. And they've actually produced their own press release about it because they were so pleased that they won an award. So, you know, we should also be very pleased that they won an award and write a press release. The judging needs to take place no later than July. We actually did judging in August and I think that was a bit late for some gardens. Some people had already cleared away some of their flowers, so we had to guess in some cases how much better they would have looked in July. It has been a very dry year for gardens. All the meetings committee needs to be invited to the awards event, apologies that you weren't. We were very nervous about numbers attending because we didn't have a huge budget for catering. And plus there was a bit of a hoo-ha about where the awards ceremony would be. If you remember, we originally were going to have it at King's House Gardens. But we hadn't factored into the costs of the £100 charge standing forth to have the event in the gardens. So we couldn't have it in gardens because we didn't have £100. So we need to decide as a committee if we do want to have it in the gardens, which would mean that we can have more people attending because there's more space and we'll have to factor that into the budget. Post a bit of press release needs to be produced to uncover that. There's needs, when we do the nominations next year, there needs to be a section on the website with set fields for information. So we gave out an email address this year, particularly for the qualitative categories, environmental champion. People nominated a name, oh, because they do nice work in the community, but didn't really explain why. So as the judges, we literally had to review the list. And in a lot of cases, we knew who the people were, it's a small town. But it would have been really nice to know why that person was specifically being nominated. And I think we need to, you know, tell people what information we need a bit more. And we was a bit lost as, well, we weren't that lost, we, you know, we, between, we, we literally went around the judging panel and said, does anyone know anything about this particular individual? And we sort of shared knowledge, basically. But so we need to be more detailed. People need to be invited to the awards ceremony in a timely manner. Again, it's a staffing capacity issue, but well, Nick and Hazel were running around and people were only invited two days before the event. The certificates were done in the house, I don't know who did them, but they did a brilliant job with them. And similarly, I haven't put it on here, but it's worth noting, every single garden that was nominated got a letter of thanks. And that, that was, so when the judges went round, we visited every garden that was nominated. And I had delivered the letter that Hazel had written thanking them, and I think that went down really well. So even if they didn't, weren't finalists, they still got a letter and it didn't cost us any postage. Which was a brilliant idea, I had thought of that, so that saved a few of them. And then again, yeah, there's this, this point about the awards ceremony, we need to factor in at least £100,000 if we want to have it in King's House Gardens next year. So that's my list, obviously being a bit cold faced a little. Dennis and Mike?
Right, on mine, I just, one, I wish to thank you for that comprehensive list you just gave us. Because it has taken a lot. I can answer questions if you've answered them, I think, well done.
That?
I think this is becoming a very important little ceremony. Is there, I'm here back to me, is there any way that people can nominate people for these things without going online and doing everything?
Electronically.
Because there are people out there who don't have computers. I know they're told about the libraryism and there are others who don't. If you're dyslexic, it's very difficult to do online things. So we, we really have to look to giving an opportunity for everybody to be able to enter this or nominate other people there. Thank you, Chair.
No, I think that's a brilliant point, actually. I'm thinking actually we could probably knock together some papers on the next forms for next year. And we can, you know, we give them to councillors to, to.
But I think it's very environmentally friendly.
You know, we, we use recycled paper, we'll. No, I think that's a good point, Dennis. It's like we can have on file and if somebody comes in.
Print, two, three up.
Let's be letting people know they're available. Mike was next and then Carla. Yeah.
My garden was nominated, I, I don't know why. But this, Laura Ryan has started wandering around with Mark, isn't it? But anyway, the point is, I, I think from both sides, I think I made a better point, so. One seems to be the issue, and both, while you alluded to it, Chairman, I'm grateful that you've done so. And that is the time of the visit. I don't mean the time of day, I mean, the day of the month, the month of the year. Months, years spent when this was done, very early. My garden was genuinely nominated, it was worth it. It was off in June. It's slipped a good deal by this new method. And I think anyone who, who gardens will know that gardens are better sometimes here or another. And that you can plan your garden to get its best on the sake of the 14th of June. If you do that and then you're judged on the 14th of August, two months later, you're not going to do very well. And I think it really would be much fairer if people knew when the judging was going to take place so they can plan their garden accordingly. Between the judging and the announcement of the results, I happened to walk past a garden, I thought was superb. And I fell into conversation with the guy who was in charge. And he said to me, you know, I was so lucky this year, the day before the judges came, I spent ages doing my gardening. We used as its very best. And he was lucky and funnily enough, he happened to get first prize. I just think that was his good luck, I'm not complaining, I'm saying it's a bit unfair on other gardens who perhaps were at their best three months, three weeks earlier and a few weeks later, possibly in two months. So can I suggest that thought be given to the possibility of saying, and the judging will take place between the 13th and 14th of July next year? And then people can say, right, if I want to have a good garden and if you judge, then that's the time for me to be thinking about it. At the moment, it seems to me some people are unfortunately handicapped by not having their garden at its best at the time when the judges happen to come.
Thank you, Mike. I enjoyed judging your garden.
Yeah, well, I mean, the tasting, I think I was dreadful, I mean, embarrassing, I was, I mean, I tried, I tried to bribe them and let them feel.
Thank you.
I follow your point, yeah, in our flowers, they don't, they don't work on council schedule.
They do at different times of the year, and different gardens have different things, like any different species and things, they will make it pretty in a certain time. It's just the reality of nature. Isn't it, I'll test and I'll leave to all of paper certain times, time frame for when they will be judged. And also perhaps so that we retain a couple of pictures on when it blooms and is big before comparison. Because, you know, some of them, like that fellow that I mentioned was lucky, he done it the day before. But in the, some of them, I have beautiful flowers, one month and they're bed drying the next, which is not that whole, really, it's just, it's just time, isn't it? So to make it fair, just retain a little bit of items and compare them when judges come to be a bit more fair to them. And then it's point very well done, accessibility, you know, there are a lot of king gardens that do, they're not very tanky. You know, there are a lot of king gardens that do, they're not very tanky, so having different ways of them to be nominated on, on, like, priorities is important. And my final point is £100 from Stanford Gardens to do the awards ceremony. I understand that they have their own, you know, financial aspect to look at. But if there is one thing that is suited to King's Gardens, would be of the garden award ceremony. So perhaps we can convince them to allow us to have it there at a low cost, but in hope, right? Thank you.
Noted, thank you. Any other comments, Stuart, please?
Couple of things, um, I congratulate all of you. Or give me back something that we haven't asked. I think that's it, people in gender. A little bit more pride in people's, um, pride. So communication, I think you have your right to, it's probably one thing, the results out there. We'll have news in the paper. One is obviously presence association, three, and say, it's a number of big work on maybe more area. On the radar again, so when we come to do it next year, just keep thinking. One question really is, did these sponsors get invited to the awards ceremony? Have they attended? So whether you've got things delivered.
We are, as a result of the job, as well. To say thank you this fall and better take out in the re-launcher. Yeah, no, you're absolutely right, it's, um, and we did, you know, publicly say at the, the awards ceremony, who the sponsors, um, thank. So, is there anything, Nick, you wanted to add from that sort of office in front of Yanni?
Yeah, I think, I think like you say, this year there was a few bits and pieces and we, we had, you know, once you got to move forward on to 2023, so we're planning well ahead this time. And I think, you know, the first time after seven years, I think it went really well. It's just the crucial that we're trying to fit it in amongst the day-to-day. But we're plenty of notice and a plan of action for 2023, we can certainly make it work.
Yeah.
I just have a quick point, there's actually a place, it's a good issue. And actually applies in previous one we mentioned when it comes to the, the groups wanting to fundraise or play parks. It's a memorable to underestimate the, the primary people and their willingness to put hands to something. By leaving on the ledger, they might not have won the award, but they feel they have been recognised for all that. People tend to look after the, better for the areas if they put their, you know, they put a time in. And if they have, if they have been recognised for that aspect well, I think that applies to the previous, I should say, um, with the play parks. People want to put their time and time to it and putting on their part, it means that they will also look after it. That one is a community afterwards, that push for gardens.
Thank you. And the only other thing I've just thought of is, it'd be really nice if we could have some photos printed and displayed in the awards ceremony. As people verbally talk about their gardens. But if we actually, because I did take photos of the gardens as we were going around. So we could actually have like a lot of mini display at the awards ceremony. People could, you know, listen to my garden type. Brilliant. Well, yeah, thank you everyone's contribution to that. And it's always easier to keep something going than it is to start something up. So now we've started up, hopefully next year it'll be a degree easier. We'll move on to item 293, which is the approved small grants, one to discuss. Alan's very kindly done the review and sent it around. Is there anything else you wanted to add to that one?
I think on this one, I was going, it's ridiculous when we get startup or, because they don't have very much record. They don't have, this one doesn't constitute itself. And I was just wondering if the committee, if that's what, like, we go do a little bit more work with them. Maybe just go and explain why we need this, why we need to constitute this other thing and give them an opportunity to do, to do it, we possibly need to enable it. And I think that's the option for the committee to consider. But they haven't complied with the conditions.
Yes, Mike.
A general comment, however, I think is a really important subject and it's important. I think for the community that this particular activity is encouraged to thrive. There are a number of other groups who do seek to provide meals and opportunities for companionship among older people. Often it's a meeting, if always was a coffee or a tea or a meal, a mixture of them. And we really, we need to be encouraged in that. And other groups, for example, I don't know if it's still working, but there was a first meeting of a group of people, mainly refugees, which was just a coffee, I think, and there were nineteen at first meeting. So there obviously is an activity. So I'm in favour of this one and I hope it can be brought forward in the way we can describe despite that very often we have problems getting an organisation as such set up. I think it's really, you know, I think, I'm saying, I think we should be more proactive in saying, providing these kinds of opportunities for older people, in particular for single and, and lonely people. Very important, it's something we should be encouraging and working towards saying to other groups. Is there anything you need from us in order to make your life thrive? Because they're really are to have an important job. It's a lot cheaper feeding people and giving people a chance to talk than putting them in homes and saying, we're going to give them a customer. We call it, so look after people, so.
Thank you. But then Stuart.
I wouldn't classify myself as lonely, but I had a week in the house in Norwich, house sitting. I have missed Fethford in lovely friendly places, confusing, you had to walk down High Street and say hello to people. I mean, yeah, it's lovely shopping in Norwich and walk around for that friendly chat with people. You know, I talk to people on Facebook and on the phone, it's not the same as speaking to people in person. And you can tell when you see all the people in the shops where they're chatting to the shop assistant. It might be the only person that's on that day, so I think encouragement of having a little group like saying, pop that up to me. And, and just chat to somebody on a one-time basis, it'd be brilliant.
Thank you, Stuart.
Groups that haven't applied, do encourage them to apply, particularly have a constitution. Brilliant, thank you, thank you for taking that on line. And the next slide two nine four, review of mowing regime is something that I asked to go on the agenda. Those of you that have been on this issue for a while will recall that we had a fairly large consultation on amending our mowing regime, largely with the plan of reducing the frequency of the mowing from an environmental point of view. And we had a long debate about the results and we came to some conclusions on a number of different locations. And for whatever reason, largely because lots of them are owned by Breckland. Those decisions haven't been implemented. So now that we've come to the end of this season, so we can introduce anything for this year, it's a bit last minute dot com. So I wanted on the agenda today, just to get the committee's view on whether we want to go ahead and try to next year implement what we previously agreed to do. And I'll just run through the list because I managed to pick out the minutes from our September twenty one meeting when we approved them. So the first one was school plane. Is school plane ours a part of the IDV?
School plane is ours, currently not maintained by the IDV.
So that's the second one. So our decision was to go for option C, which was reduced mowing frequency to once or twice a year, leaving a path along the diagonal edge. School plane is the one that can close, yeah?
Yeah.
So we're looking to reduce the mowing frequency to once or twice a year, leaving a diagonal path. Is the committee view that that would be our aspiration if we could achieve that? Dennis?
I would be in support of that. But I think we need to mention that one of the reasons we're doing this is to reduce the cost of our mowing, not just the environmental. The environmental is a top issue, but we will reduce the cost of our mowing.
I think the cost is minimal frankly, because I don't think we'll get a refund from Serco if we reduce the amount of frequency. I think their charge is wherever we increase the frequency, but we're not going to get a reduction. And I never, maybe, I don't know if anyone knows, but what that story. Do you remember Breckling Pay Circle?
Yeah, we said you don't.
Don't mention.
A bit controversial, yeah, at the moment they maintain under the old agreement in the street with their contracts. But potentially if we start changing regimes, we might maybe not.
It's a bit of a, it's a bit of a, yeah.
Okay, that's good. Stuart?
I remember on this one, because it's called Hope, Hope or Sorry, but you see some kept. And we've got all sorts of area which.
I think when we looked at this before, the area running parallel to Brandon Road and the trees that we would still have to cut up because you'd have sort of visibility issues in the road and the junctions. So I think we'd cut it fairly neatly around the pathway on the outside, but leave the other side of the trees to produce frequency.
Because the little well, in the buying path, which is well used, if it's quite high. It could be a safety aspect.
Well.
I'm misunderstanding something, I'm just. Right for me. If you look for example at the map, it shows a different areas which you're talking about. When the next starting from two, for example. It says that he added up to two maps, and there's a green and a lilac. On the map itself, it's, it's minus percent. It's been thick.
I have a opinion that one up next is.
It's just very, it showed mostly the areas that are within the conservation. So that being the case, does that map not show green and lilac? It looks, it may show you the areas, but it doesn't show anything else, I think.
Ah, I see.
Look, the blue is just all the areas, as it regards whether they're green or lime.
I got quite confused with all of those, I must have. That's partly why I went back to the minutes, refreshed myself, what the conclusion was.
Go.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I see.
And then just going back to that, just going back to the point you were making. I do think that's something we might like to look at on several other areas where we perhaps be wise to create a swath of cut along the edge where a piece of land runs into the next, against the road or pavement. So there are a couple of others. Both were very real, I think, which where that applies. So I think that's wise.
Okay, so on this particular one, school plane, we've got Stuart's suggestion of leaving as is with the current cutting, because it's a relatively microfocal location. And the alternative option is to reduce mowing frequency to once or twice a year, leaving a path along the diagonal edge and also cutting on the roadside as well.
I don't want to go into that, but actually I have two kids that I do too. So for them, if they were to look at this, and I think you have a people like in this situation, look at this, it all looks one line colour. So perhaps I can suggest now, and we actually make a quick resource pattern, or way we plan to distribute which different areas, because there's not much color contrast, especially if you have a vision impaired. You won't be able to tell the difference, because my case comes.
Then this is a rehash of the report that came out before, but.
I'm just saying, for any future papers, if you put an actual colour, we'll be able to see them.
Susie? Sorry, did you have your hand up, Susie?
No, I'm sorry.
The only way I can suggest we move forward on these, I'm hoping the rest will don't take as long to. If we have a show of hands as to way forward. So those in favour of Stuart's option to leave as is, the current frequency is four. Those in favour of reducing the frequency to once or twice a year?
See that?
Yeah. Mate, rock from your own back. Well, the decision we reached last year is to reduce the frequency, so we'll stick with that for the time being. Moving on to Melford Common, we went with option D, which was leave Melford Common mowing regime as it is. Recognising this important recreational area and all the rest.
Probably about the football area.
It just says Melford Common, not the lower part or the upper part, it's the whole of it really. People content to leave Melford Common as is?
I think we're hiring out a piece of town. They probably is trapped in the heart of something with grass three foot tall.
Very good. And lady gentle men, option C, reduce mowing frequency to once or twice a year at this site, leaving a path around it. Okay, so that is owned by us, and presumably that's cut by Serco?
Chair, some of the lady's trust.
Which is technically, okay. So are members content that we reduce the frequency of the mowing there to once or twice a year? Yeah. Anybody against?
They did, but so in short, they're not, but with paths around as well, because we have talked for now, probably about two years, about spending a bit of time and energy on training. Certainly our other partners, Dr. Trail, Trail for Children, have several suggestions that might get to fruition. So I would like to just, we have a path that goes right around where the rivers are, as well as the inner side, which is an alternative to walking along the river path.
Thank you. Just so I can update my list as we go along, Melford Common is owned by us, but cut by Serco?
No cutting on any of these.
Sorry?
We don't do any cutting on any of these.
Oh, really? Okay. Nuns Bridges. So this must be the Nuns Bridges sign of Mill Lane.
Yeah.
Area. And the decision last time was to leave Nuns Bridges mowing regime as it is. Yep. Nunnery Drive, sorry, again, that's cut by Serco. Nunnery Drive, this is the area around the old Nuns Gate type bit there. Leave Nunnery Drive very mowing regime as it is.
It's used for kids.
St Barnabas Close, the bit opposite the jet garage, harvest garage, whatever it is he says. Reduce mowing frequency to once or twice a year over most of this site. Recognising that's not really a recreational area.
I mean, unfortunately, when there's a bent up that area, it is, the car park considerably. Including road running over the top of our head. And we think so. Would us, not knowing it, help the situation that people wouldn't want to park in the jungle?
Yeah, I mean, if there was a, we granted a specific request for it to be used as a car park. It was a request that Serco do cut it for that occasion. But on the whole, it's not a recreational area and it would make sense to reduce it, that one.
I agree with that, because that's why the access rose in effect, and it also looked a bit tidying when they come in.
Well, I think wildflower mill is nice. You don't have to have everything cut down to an inch.
Okay.
I don't disagree. We said, you know, when we did the consultation in Europe, but there was a, there was a third that wanted everything cut to an inch of its life. Third wanted everything not cut at all, the third that didn't care either way. With all of these decisions, we're bound to please some of us. But I'm very conscious that we did a big consultation and we need to act on it. You know, because I am being emailed about it, frankly. So we are going to reduce the mowing frequency to once or twice a year on St Barnabas Close.
So just very, I'm the chair, this once or twice a year here. Who gives the option of whether it's once a year, twice a year? Because give the option, Serco's to go for once a year. And that is a little bit, I'd be curious, that's not.
Where? I mean, the best time to cut it is after it's all seeded and. But presumably, would you cut it at the start of the year and then at the end? Okay, just want to. So the answer is once a year, Dennis?
Yeah, if we could do that on each one, so that we could justify whether it's one or two times.
I should mention, there's a lot of plans, but I'm not supposed to drive past and necessarily just come to the roads and the edges and go ahead and not mowing them because they are breaking course and whatnot. And they're, this is the billboard, the sign up, you say, minimum weakness versus a big group of wildlife. And that tells you exactly why they're going between wild rather than just being nice and true along the roads. Perhaps you can put those sign up in the middle, for one year, and that's for one.
Mind the weeds, we're eating the bees.
You've got budget.
I've got budget. Yes, that was done, thank you. And the last one, Barnham Cross playing fields, the council seek to quote the mowing a maze from the meadow, option D, and adopts option C of the site nearest houses to be mowed in forty six. I was very confused with this decision we arrived at last time, but the idea was to have a sort of longer bit of grass on the upper level of Barnham Cross Common and a different standard cutting on the lower level, confusing it up.
Okay, ideally, that sounds like a good idea, but in reality, choosing our residents, et cetera, are going to stick to the maze path and not make their own path through it. And it would take a very short period of time, but the maze become unworthable. So I'm not in favour of the maze.
Are you in favour of?
But as long as there's enough room there for the football to take place with the residents around it, I might leave maze area be left a while. And have once or twice cuts in here for once.
Can I suggest that we leave the current cutting of Barnham Common as is? We're going to reduce the cutting on St Barnabas and School Plane, and effectively we're creating two wildflower mill. Let's give that a go and then we can always reduce the cutting of other areas at a later date.
Yeah, I always try to work with you.
That sounds like a good compromise. And then.
Good idea, because in particular, we're talking about his own heavily. And I think that there's a limit to the patience of dog walkers in terms of keeping too many.
So in terms of the way forward, we need to formally write a Serco and say, in these two locations, we want to reduce the frequency. If they agree to that, I can't imagine why they wouldn't be reluctant to. And can we look into costings for the signs? I can't remember who says colour. You know, these signs about, you know. Of flowers.
The reason behind the reason.
It's big yellow, but there might be some other ones.
The reason why, so just like that's running fast on the way back from holiday, is that this is the first thing you see when it's going to this point, that is the first thing you see getting for town, it's just overgrown everywhere. And it just gives it a sort of, sort of the, the backing for, okay, we're not just trying to save costs and abandon these areas. Maybe it's ugly, we actually, there's a reason why they're overgrown and that's for that one. Might not do wonders, but please informs the public, it gives us an excuse of why things like that.
When we write to Serco, we include in the letter that we would ask that the time they save on mowing those areas is redeployed to additional heat to keep those locations. I have no idea how long it takes to cut these two places, but it must be good for you.
Yeah, but they have to some year that time, right?
Yeah.
Go back to deer room and cut grass there. Any other comments, please, on the review of mowing regime? Everyone happy? Are you happy with all that news? No, this isn't happy, amazing. Right, we have ten minutes. Hire of open spaces to item two nine five to discuss the applications received, and we've had a bumper crash. What we got?
The first one is Wheels on the Field twenty twenty three. Remember last year was a little bit of last minute dot com. This year they have prepared all the documentation. They obviously don't have insurances, et cetera, those are annual documents. On this particular function, it's ready to, all the council has to do is, do we permit them to use our land? Breckland Council, the Safer Action Group, do all the legal issues around that, they ensure that there's fire, fire engine access, marking, et cetera. We actually don't pay a role, any further role in that other than giving them permission. So again, this would just be a decision in principle, subject to them providing the information, the insurances prior to the event, in short, covers that.
Members content?
Yes.
Yep, so that one's happy. Just like five minutes since we agreed last.
The second one, I missed it, but there's so much correspondence that I have undersold that it's a group of people that have asked to use Melford Common on the eighteenth of September twenty twenty two. It's actually not an organisation, it's just getting riders together. It's part of an initiative to satisfy people to horse riders and all sorts of things. As I say, there is a lot of documentation. I've been criticised internally for not putting more information out. But it's just that they do the event, all of horse riders have to have insurances, et cetera. All they're asking to do is park, is use our facility Melford Common to actually park. Their application, there was actually a double booking for Melford Common at this particular date. Their application was the first one we received, so we've given difference to that.
Yes.
You were saying that they want you to park their vehicles on park.
And their horse traders, and that's where.
And horse traders, and then go off for a ride on our common areas?
I know, I think it's a trail search, possibly to reach Russell, somewhere near there.
It's to promote safety away, so people and horses.
Yeah, I'm all for horse riding, I used to do it myself. But yeah, if, if I'm doing, well, even if it's on, and I probably support it, but you know, it's.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's promoting horse riding, it helps that it's a bit of a, like the streets, like.
Yeah.
So that people can gather over, and treat it on their horses. We're asked, being asked to use it.
Presumably it's a bit horse trained.
As long as we've got the time, that they will be being, could stay repaired, I would think.
Do we need to scoop up the burnt knife before we're ready? That's it.
I don't, I don't think they've got that job. I've actually, the other booking, which, the two bookings for that date is, the other one is the Larry Gray Fun Fair. So we, the problem is, I mean, we're following a process, which is first time, that's set. But we may not have a fun fair this year because there's no other dates that Larry can come, he's so used to coming on that date. In addition to that, declare a slight interest because he has paid for and an effort has gone out, given the date of the eighteen for September in the About Fair for Maggots. It's, it's already gone out. I wonder, I mean, I'm sure there may be an issue with noise or something, but given that it's purely a car park situation, are we not able to accommodate both? Because Larry goes on the bottom field and the car park they're asking for would be the top field, or the very top of Melford Common. I'm keen not to, I mean, Larry's a big supporter of FAF, he's a big supporter of the council. And I, and he knows, he knows that he messed up by not getting his paperwork in quickly. He takes it for granted, he has those dates really. But I'd be keen not to upset Frank.
I agree with you, Carrie, on this one. And although it was, with the paperwork, you can start first, first, third places, we we try, I don't expect, but actually, it's been doing this for many, many years. I think there'll be a lot of families and people who have just disappointed there wasn't a fun fair this year. Not to mention there is a support, and it always sort of works really well with council throughout the years that we do it. I agree, so can, which we can manage to accommodate both. But I would come on to the point, really starting about the provision, the whole spectrum. How they can go more safely, stay in one part of the, of the field and still do that thing. Perhaps it's just about, they're working out logistics.
I agree.
We know some numbers, how it's, I mean. The idea of lower field is, there is a sort of natural slope that is not the other, it's more uphill. But surely the fairgrounds would be there more than just one day, you know, so, so, you know, it is a bigger factor. So, yeah, so you go better, just give the horse box still on one day to detriment and not having a fun fair.
I can't, it's obviously really engaging, obviously with Larry around it. And my last conversation was that he had agreed to move his fair to the nineteenth, to the week later. And so, so he's not cancelling the fair for, for September, he's just, he has agreed to move it by one week.
I know that the problem he's got though is because lots of the family members that come to the event are already committed to other locations. So they, it'll be a much diminished fair because they're going, there was something there, but there won't be as many rides.
No, sorry, can I just say, one other option is that actually talking to the people that want to organise horse riding, whether they could do it from another one of our, just perhaps allowing them to do it from another one of our open spaces. So they didn't provide the two together. If I move through, it's possible depending which trail or what route they want to take, but perhaps you can talk to them and rearrange if no one.
I think they have a set route to walk along the horses.
I have no idea whether it might be, but it might be that they could take off from a different spot, that's like to be able to work new with them.
So in terms, sorry.
My statement, we work with both parties, come to a mutually agreeable thing. I know the horse riding has a priority because they end up there in first, but if we cancel the fair, it's going to make it very unpopular, councilors, and.
Even more unpopular. I, I, I agree with the principle, first come, first served, so I think they're obviously doing exactly the right thing. But hopefully we can try to accommodate both and leave it to Alan and to sort out for.
And if they do come to mutually agreeable, can we be informed as a committee so that we can spread the word?
Yeah. Yeah. I did wonder if the horse horses could go on Castle Park, it makes it a bit more of a sort of event. If we start taking on Castle Park, people might not like that.
I might be the horse.
There's all great access to Melford Common, to be honest with you, so. Yeah.
Barnham Common is the obvious one, but I suppose it wouldn't take them too long to go down Nuns Bridges Road now through that way.
Yeah.
It's worth asking anyways.
Top part of the common and then go on the dodges. Right, so are you happy with that? It's a bit more work for you to do and. Ask the questions. I mean, if Larry's put it in place and the following week he's happy with. And there's not fairs going off elsewhere, better enough, he's just got a publicity problem because there's going to be an awful lot of confusion now. That's what I'm slightly worried about, but the public response could be because the town council are going my slot away. Even if it wasn't booked, trying to head off a public relations issue. Sorry, Mike.
I understand the point that it's been to first, but I, I do think that's very unfortunate. The fund has been coming for some years and it's an option for all the people. This is a new, the other one is a new venture, so I understand, and it's not for those who are not, not really people, so I think it's unfortunate. The fund is some kind of priority. However, given that they weren't first under deed's been done, can we please ensure that when we speak to Larry, we say, what date would you like next year? Or we are already allocated this same date for you next year, so it doesn't matter.
Yeah, I think it's going to be really a big lose for the town council if there is no fun fair. Or if it's a school inside. Yeah, I agree. We don't want any more bad ones. Okay, that deals with that one, and then we've got one more.
The last one is the fireworks event on the sixth of November. That's at Barnham Cross Common, that again is done by Larry Gray, and he's just asked for that particular booking. All his paperwork will have to be assessed again because it does expire. And just to make sure that he's catered for, his insurance at the moment are all around funfares. This year around fireworks, so we want to do that paperwork. But again, that's a, that's a principled decision.
Okay.
Mike? I think it's an excellent event, and I can continue to work with Larry. I just have a slight concern about it. Each year, the fun fair, certainly fireworks, has a collection for the mayor's fund. A bucket, a bucket is written that you actually go and come out and it probably says on the side that something like mayor's fund or mayor's charity. As far as I'm aware, Alan can confirm this otherwise, there has been no contribution to the mayor's fund this year, coming November twenty twenty one. And there appears to be some kind of hitch. It might be connected with the delicate negotiations going on regarding the last nineteen ninety three. But I do think it disappointed, pretty lost that side of things. And it's certainly disappointed to me personally, as I've been the head, that I'm not able to add to my fund as now, and that contribution which people gave expecting that it would be added, because that's what the bucket said. So unless I'm mistaken, otherwise I will contact Larry personally, which I've not done yet, and see whether there's anything that can be done about it. But I don't want to step on the toes of people organising a recovery from a difficult situation we got into regarding nineteen thirty. So perhaps we need to negotiate what we do on that. I certainly don't want to lose the option of. I certainly don't want to lose the option of the funding that we've been accustomed to, to contribute to the mayor's charity. And that's part of the fireworks, you know, Larry does it to make money. And this is his gift back to the town in effect.
Okay, and I think Alan scribbling away at that point, but so perhaps the two of you can be A's. And our task is to agree or not to the principle of having the fire. Are you content that we get consent for that event to go on? Read, thank you. Subject to all the relevant bits and pieces as Alan outlined. Um, given the possibly crisis, it is a miracle that we've got a free event still. Because it must be incredibly expensive to, to stage that, so very lucky compared to other towns. Anything else to say on the fire of open spaces? Everything you need to get.
Just, just a little coffee. Really, it affects more how we deal with the owners of the other group. And this is because they also want to do the November event. They are staple every year when it comes to entertainment for the town. We're real comfortable to upset the relationship, what you've been going on for these many years. Because ultimately the town council.
Read. Okay, moving on to item two nine six, community engagement, anything to note about community engagement? None. Um, I think it would be useful if we sent a reminder out on social media or whatever about the small grant scheme. It's, um, we've not had many applications set up this year, so if we could send something out, that would be very useful. Um, so we have two agenda items remaining, folks. Item two eight two, environment strategy contribution and item two nine one, committee priorities for next financial year. Are you content that we carry on for an extra fifteen, twenty minutes just to get through those two? And in which case can somebody propose a second that we suspend the standing order that caps our meeting in two hours? You're also keen. You get both of those, Karen, take your pick. Thank you very much. So we'll deal with item two eight eight, first, environment strategy contribution to agree actions and projects to inform, to support the environment strategy. Um, and to just run a bit of overview, because this has been gender writing for all committees, isn't it? With a sort of first coming up to town council wide strategies.
I think as a council, what we've, what we've been asked to do is really just think about how we can further our environment strategy. But also, I think it's just a separate task, but sort of integrating it into committee priorities and committee objectives. So that it's, it's an integrated part going forward. I think what we've done previously is we've been a little bit kind of focused on one and then focusing the other one. And really what the town clerks ask committees to do is just really look at some potential projects that we can start suing. Incorporate into the wider committee strategies regarding certain things that we're doing amenities that could contribute to our improving the environment. And going forward along that one. So the town clerk has put together a document for all the committees. This is the one relating to amenities and you could, you can see that you've just made some suggestions. Some committees that I've been working with that have already had this are going away and they're going to do a broader, broader concentration on it. I'm not too sure what this committee would like to do, but these are some of the areas that to think about so that we can integrate it into the committee priorities going forward.
Okay, does anyone have any immediate suggestions? You're on fire today, Mike.
Yeah, I, I, I can't explain that, folks. But I do think, I do think, I'm going to say it again, I'll probably talk about this. I think in many ways this committee, this council, committee and this council are doing much more for environmental issues than we did years ago. I would want to start by saying this is what we do already. Because I think we do a lot. And I think we, you know, if we did nothing, it'd be very easy. When you engage in activities which can be called green activities, it's hard to see. For example, land and plant open spaces, yes, of course, because we have a very vast.
You do.
Um, and it picks, you know, it picks all over the town, you know, Terry, you organise several. So we, we're community in general is quite, quite a big process. So, you know, we, we, I think we should be telling what we do now and saying, and of course, we're going to improve on that. But we've been green in some ways for, I remember years, I don't think we should be shy in saying so.
That's a good point. Dennis, you were nice.
Well, some of my priorities, they've, they've come through. Um, yeah, I agree. Some of these things I've been trying to push for for a long time, native species, fruit trees, food trees, I've been pushing for years now. And I think we have a good list there and we should be shouting to the room what we do.
Sure. Any other comments or suggestions?
We add nuts to it.
Nuts?
Nut trees.
Nut tree, okay. Any particular thought now?
Hazel, I think it goes quite nicely. Walnuts are always good, but I want, probably those walnuts, that's like.
Good. See, sorry.
I agree, I think that idea of planting food trees and things like that is brilliant. Amputree, thums maybe and nuts, yeah, I mean, nuts are.
Yeah.
Okay.
A whole bunch of going up the very, very, up to. Tangerines, there's a whole bunch along the right hand side of the road going.
Um, that ties in with some of the thoughts that I had in advance. I mean, we did have quite a busy tree and truck planting focus a while ago. And I do think we need to go back to that. Um, and the maintenance of some of the things that we've planted, there's an awful lot of plastic tree guards with nothing in them. Um, and if we're planting trees, I'd much rather us buy and plant something a bit more substantial than some of the things that we've been planting. I don't know what else to describe them as. But there are a few opportunities around town to plant some more substantial trees. Not necessarily on that Pretkin land. So I do think a programme of maintaining our existing forest of plastic tubes. Um, and I would like us to explore, there are now biodegradable tree guards rather than these horrible plastic ones that you can chew, you know, by the nose. So if we could look into biodegradable tree guards, that would be really useful. Okay.
Actually, I'm quite surprised that some of those trees pass or now can actually survive.
Some have.
No, some, but you know, in marriage, I'm an ex military man, I'd like to see trees passing in groups rather than straight rows. Especially not under cables, you know, so I think a bit more thought about having garden rather than just in military rows. Because obviously those trees look more attractive.
I agree.
I, I was going to say, I, I rather plant, plant a few more robust ones that we don't want to take last then. Then they're full straighter ones and so flimsy that what they want, you know, about seventy percent of them will die out before this plastic tube. Before they have the chance to take, take them round, so. But it's how we shoot the plants and how we just plant them, it would be more safe.
In Cambridge, they run a community scheme called Watering Wednesday, where residents adopt just pre-planted near them. They take it in turns to water because the other issue is given the climate that had, partly why an awful lot of them don't survive. So that sort of community approach would be really useful. Twitter account called Cambridge Tree Canopy or something. Very good. And but I'm conscious of Mike's point, I don't want us to come up with a whole new list because we are already doing quite a lot. I'd rather we focus on, you know, if, if, if I, I continue to walk past Castle Park and don't see any plastic tubes currently, I'll be very happy.
I agree.
Are we being invited to remove plastic tubes? Because I'm happy to do that.
Well, I, I literally, if I see one and it's on its side and there's nothing in it, I am not putting it in the bin. Sorry, Nick, although I do give some to you.
It's, it's certainly that we're looking to move forward with Dave, Morgan's part of the team. So we, unfortunately, Dave has joined us, is, he's done sort of conservation volunteering and stuff before. So he's happy to work alongside volunteers and we can plan to schedule those things in. Um, we've given the conservation volunteers, we've got them scheduled to work together.
Yeah, sort of.
Were you asking for us to adopt these?
Well, no, not that particular, I think there were suggestions really, so if there was any on there that you particularly liked. Yeah, all of them. Is everybody else like one of them?
I think do.
Yeah. Stop that list. Are there any nick that you wanted, because, you know, any, any ways that you see could be more environmental?
I think like you said, the food trees ambition is very good. We did try initially on a previous opportunity, we put some down near Barnham Common Car Park, near the effort fields. And they have all died out. Essentially, we, we have got an area there we can replace. Um, whether fruit trees are behind your finger because of pollution, some off the road or not sure. You know, potentially look at what alternative areas you can put them in.
Yep, definitely. And the only other thing I wondered about was, um, bird and bat boxes on some of the trees on land. Also on some of our buildings, a lot of them are sort of historic buildings and probably, you know, lost a lot. Bird boxes, but any opportunities for that sort?
We have them in the cemetery.
We did, we have, we have a lot in the cemetery, but we don't really have many elsewhere. Um, so, uh, okay, any other, I mean, I'm sure this strategy will be a while to develop. So any other suggestions that come up, do let us know. And if there's any members of the public with any suggestions, do feed them into the council. We haven't mentioned the river, but there may well be some ideas. Um, uh, okay, moving on to committee priorities for financial year twenty three, twenty four. To discuss and recreate committee priorities and identify the appropriate funding. So this is the twenty three, twenty four financial year. If you wanted to say, and other than, we're obviously being encouraged to plan ahead.
I, I, I think, I mean, the last two years have been very tough, uh, from, from a budgeting and finance planning. We have really cut off our budgets down. I think it's better making sure that we are setting aside money to do the things that we, that we have. Maintain our assets in particular, which I think is, is quite fundamental and to ensure that the committees, what you want us to achieve, we have to set that aside and actually do that. Um, and I think that's really what this is, it's, it's, it's trying, it is trying to get us to think a little bit more forward. And I think also at the moment we're supposed to do one year at a time, even though it's, our financial regulations require us to do three years. But in the last two years, it's been crazy to even to, to try to do that. And if we can start looking at, at a starting on the term strategy, it helps us sort of make some of the tough financial decisions. For example, if I go back to some of the earlier discussions of payparks, we are going to set aside money to refurbish our payparks. Can we start doing that, how much do we set aside on a annual basis? So that we're in a position to start doing the renewal program. And that's sort of the stuff that we might need to think about, what are we doing and, and how do we go forward?
Anyone got any immediate priorities they want to note? Shall I share my list with you and you can tell me if you. Um, well, uh, I think Alan's point about play areas is very valid because I think they, you know, the, the cost of the equipment itself. And the maintenance cost is not going to get any cheaper, you know, a hundred thousand pounds. And they weren't even really a beast of play areas, so we are going to have to budget some money for that. Toilets, I think we need to set up a bit of a sinking fund for the toilets. And we've had a, was it one year, two years, three years ago, I can't remember, we did the big upgrade. But, you know, we need to start putting some money aside, because they will need to be refurbished at some point, they, you know, they're quite heavily used. Um, fish pass, we need to put some money in the budget to implement the solution for the fish pass in next year's budget. Effective in bloom, we need to, I think, budget some of our own money for the front garden competition and award ceremony. It was entirely funded by a sponsor, but we need to budget a little bit. Um, I would like us to the council to budget more for townwide floor displays. Um, it's the Anglia in Bloom results today and Brandon has won the best kept town in East Anglia. Um, and we can't have Brandon being us. So, um, there, there are opportunities to increase board displays, I think. So I think we need to put some money aside to that. And looking back at the priorities we adopted previously, the most outstanding one is the finishing the refurb of the Thomas Paine statue. Making sure we've got some money to do that. So they, they were in my list, sort of looking back at meetings we had of late.
Did we have only three along two lines out there?
We did. I can't remember what the answer was.
I can't either. It's, 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 I was understanding, I think so. Uh, I think that standing for should do the meeting.
Have you got any money?
No, I don't.
Any other financial priorities?
I think a general comment really, um, as all, all that's been mentioned by you, I'm just, really wanting to make sure we don't just maintain what we are already committed to. For example, the public toilets, but we find some money also to make progress in the town. We have talked for some, a few parts for years, not really. And we haven't managed to get to a point where someone with a foot chair, like you, can get from one end of the town to, you know, along the river. We just haven't got there. I think we should have got there by now. There are several areas which are impossible unless you're feet of foot and one or two, I suspect, come around the back of your. For example, it's pretty hard work even if you are used to plant in obstacles. So I, I just wish we could guarantee we would be able to put some money aside in next year's budget to improve the wonderful paths on our rivers. I'd complain to strangers now, look, from where I live, I can walk into town on one lovely river and I can walk home from town on a different lovely river. We tell the way you live in the whole rest of the UK, New York, you've got two rivers, no, exactly. It's got, there's nowhere else to go. And we should be making that up. End of round.
Did you make note of that?
Mental, to quote him.
Mental note, okay. Thank you. Um, I suspect both of those items, environment strategy and priorities, will probably come back at some point. And no doubt we'll have to set the budget for next year, the revenue budget, um, October, November time. What's the present finance wise?
We're hoping to take it to a budget to finance at the end of November.
So either October, we've got quite a full agenda for October with various options and whatnot. So maybe if we have a finance discussion at the November meeting, ready for November finance?
I can, what we would hope to do is do a revised budget in October and a revised budget and then revised in November.
Carla?
Uh, just, just on outside items if, if possible. I've been a member of the committee since the beginning, we had conversations, I do to my study that the amount of hours that I could commit to it this year. It's going to be difficult to keep on whilst I enjoy my time here. Um, I will try and run for it as long as possible, but I want to make sure that it's on recording, so people are like clear to people to realise if I have to draw from the reason. So my last year, my degree with dissertation and everything, I'm going to spend a lot of it stood daytime. And this meeting is hard time, by the evening time. So in my, it's, there's a great possibility that I might have to draw from this committee, perhaps another ones that are daytime teams, unfortunately. Just because I can't consider, they don't want me and I can't get there. So if that's the case, my apologies in advance, I'm going to stretch my schedule for this year, but it's possible.
Yeah, thank you, you did mention that too, Gordon. You're very welcome when you are. Or if you can.
I will try and make this as many meetings as possible, but it might be difficult if I'm doing term time, I will be away in Cambridge, so I might not be able to attend.
Thank you. Thank you, well, good luck with this.
I need to.
Rather you than me. Um, thank you all for staying a little bit longer at six, no, four fourteen, meeting closed, thank you very much.